Call the meeting to order. All board members are present. Let's stand for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance, my flag of the United States of America and a vote for Richard Stan.
Have no open forum tonight?
Take a motion to approve the agenda.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero.
Madam Chairman, I wish to make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'll second.
Any comments?
Uh, not, uh, no comments, which is usually good.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero. Board committee reports. Policy?
Policy met last week. Um, just minor changes matching MSBA policies and homeschooling and vending machines are up for elimination.
Out of policy?
The, the board, uh, the State Department of Education and Minnesota School Boards Association policies on homeschooling, um, aren't, aren't aligned with each other and so, um, since the policy isn't required, um, it's recommended that we not have one.
Alright, thank you. Southwest Metro?
Uh, Southwest Metro, uh, takes the month of December off unless there's something very important pending and there is not, so we will not meet this month. And also CPAC, uh, will meet, I believe, in J- uh, January for the next time.
Thank you. Community Ed?
Um, we haven't had a meeting for a while, so, but however, some of the things that are going on, the catalog should be, uh, in the homes ready, if not, uh, contact the community ed. Fitness classes are becoming more popular with the, uh, aquatic center. We have fourteen classes per week and that number will increase to nineteen in January. There's also two levels of membership to the aquatic center, the platinum and the basic design to meet the needs of more, uh, swimmers. Um, registration for summer and two eighteen, two nineteen, Kids Company opens on, uh, January twenty-fifth. And registration for preschool also. And at this time, I'd like to make a couple of comments. Uh, both the, uh, senior high band concert was excellent. And I did get, uh, get in on the sixth grade one and it's amazing how in eight short weeks, you can tell what song they're playing. Did a very good job, but there were so many people there that they did the six o'clock, at six o'clock, they did sixth grade, at seven o'clock, they did seventh grade, and eighth, eight o'clock, they did eighth grade. And so therefore, you, you probably couldn't stay for the second or third event. Also, um, Raven Stream had Belinda Jensen come down and speak and she was awesome. She talked about the weather, she talked about her books, she talked about reading in general, how important they were.
Fun. Wellness Committee?
No.
Early Childhood?
No.
Superintendent Reports?
Okay, um, a couple of things here, just wanna share with everybody. Um, earlier this week, uh, Kim Freina, our Director of Nutrition Services, um, we're having an issue with negative account balances again. She ran a report for families that were over fifteen dollars and, uh, we gotta do collection, but we have ninety-two families right now that are over that. So we're talking, uh, over six thousand dollars in negative account balances. So we're very disappointed with results. We understand, I mean, obviously, some people are struggling, um, but the money lost, uh, doesn't come out of that fund, it comes out of our general fund. So we're trying new approaches. Uh, we do have an angel fund and, uh, we're looking at things to, uh, go that route and also still finding different ways to contact these families, uh, besides strictly collection services. So, um, that's where that is right now.
Tim, can, can I ask, did they, did Kim try to get them on free and reduced or are they all on?
Yeah, we've been trying to call, but, you know.
They're still not?
They're still not. We've been working, uh, Kim's been working with the Peace Center too, uh, because we have families that come in there. So we're just, uh, continuing to look at and, yeah, I think, uh, obviously, there are some, uh, families that, uh, are hurting and we gotta figure out a way, uh, to deal with that account. So I've talked to Chuck Kyer at New Prague Times of, uh, getting some publicity out on that, especially with the angel fund working in that.
And, uh, Tim, this is an issue not just unique to New Prague. There are other districts in the state that are having the same type of difficulty as well.
Definitely, yep, definitely.
Well, and St. Paul and Minneapolis have had big drives to help reduce those non-collected accounts.
Yep. Um, another thing, um, just to keep you updated too, the, our district's formed an equity team, uh, to help guide our mission, engage and support everyone to high levels of learning, um, to ensure quality learning opportunities for all students. And we've got a meeting, actually, we've got a meeting tomorrow with the administrative team and five teachers, so we have a district team. Uh, Tom Wetschka and Tony Boothy are, uh, hitting this up. We've got some professional workshops coming up. And then we'll also have building equity teams and then chances, opportunities for professional development for all staff. So I'm gonna have Tom and Tony, uh, be presenting at a future, uh, board meeting and giving you more information about that. Uh, another thing that will be done by the end of day on Wednesday will be, uh, we have murals and it's really part of our, uh, whole, uh, construction project, the last piece of the construction project. Our mur- murals on the CEC gymnasium wall, um, and, uh, they're a painting of all five high schools from oldest to newest. And, uh, we'll take you down there after the meeting here today, but, uh, it'll be finished by, um, like I said, at the end of Wednesday, uh, Greg Prozitska is the, uh, artist or the painter. And he's, it's just striking. It's a fabulous job that he's done and, uh, it'll be something that's really neat, some really historical, uh, painting that I think everyone will enjoy. And again, that's, uh, basically the last piece of the building project. And just a couple of good news, I mean, like Donna was talking about with the aquatic center, it's, uh, really picking up with classes and the swim club. We got Chuck Webb hired as a swim club coach. He is fantastic. I was just talking to a couple of parents down there before the board meeting and he'll get, uh, great numbers there. So, uh, aquatic center is being used and it's just picking up, which is great to see with memberships and stuff. And the last thing, good news, Ryan Dolan, a junior at New Prague High School, has, uh, qualified for a trip to Chicago a few weeks ago for some competition in the German language with, uh, speaking and comprehension, that type of thing. And he's one of two, uh, people from the United States in this competition that qualified for nationals. So he'll be going in, uh, July, uh, to Germany, free trip to Germany and spend over, time over there for a national competition. So we had him, we interviewed him and Brittany Ellison, the German teacher, um, for soup talk last week. So congratulations to Ryan and, uh, again, uh, accolades also go to Brittany Ellison for, uh, uh, being our lead teacher for the German program, which is outstanding. Okay, that's all I have.
Thank you. And to our action items, the revised twenty seventeen eighteen budget.
Okay, good evening. This is, um, actually also, this presentation on the budget is also actually a part of the TNT presentation that follows this as we're required to have a budget presentation as well as part of TNT, Truth and Taxation. So since our preliminary budget that you approved in June, which is required by state statute, um, been, uh, quite a few changes to the positive and that's very good. First of all, we updated enrollment to our current projections, so we increased by seventy APUs or, um, about a half a million dollars in revenue, so that's excellent news. Our kindergarten numbers were very good, as you remember, and just overall enrollment was up. We also, I also increased the special ed revenue projection by about four hundred thousand dollars based on our sixteen seventeen calculated revenue. You know, this is somewhat of a risk to do, but I, I really feel confident that, that the new projection is, is, is pretty good. It could come in less, but it could come in more too. A lot of that is dependent on tuition billing and where our students are placed for special ed setting four programs. I also included TRA expense and revenue for the GASB sixty-eight that we're required to do. I haven't budgeted that for the last couple of years and it makes the budget look funny to actuals, so I decided to put something in there this, this year and we'll see how that goes, if that makes my actuals look any better. Um, also updated for current salary and benefit costs for all staff. Of course, our contracts aren't settled yet, so this still is somewhat preliminary. But I took my best, you know, best guess as to what the, um, uh, settlements would be. We have a one point oh, uh, custodian addition that you approved in, um, July or August. That's charged point five to the general fund and point five to Aquatics. And then we have a point five Assistant Activities Director that you approved in July and that was offset by other budget reductions. We also took a look at reducing, um, our utility budgets. We always, um, since I've been here, we, we over-budget for utilities based on worst-case scenario. And I worked with Craig to cut them down and make it a little bit more realistic. We always still have our district contingency of a couple hundred thousand dollars if we were to go over. But I tried to make those more realistic this year, um, in our revised budget. Also put in the thirty thousand dollar unplanned special fee payment to ties, which I'll be paying here, um, at the end of December. And also put a small transfer, uh, from the general fund to Fund Two for the bad debt that, um, um, Tim alluded to. Basically, at the end of last year, uh, we turned over, um, quite a bit to the, um, to our collection agency and we only get about sixty percent of that revenue if they collect anything. We just get a portion of that revenue. So here's the, the new budget, the total, um, revenue of about forty-two million and expense of about forty-three point four million. And then for unassigned specifically, we had revenue of two point, or thirty-nine point three million and expenses of forty point eight million. And that's reflected in this chart with our general fund balance history. You can see, um, in fifteen sixteen, we lost a little bit of fund balance as, as was reported at our, um, October meeting from the auditor. And then we would, um, see our unassigned fund balance decrease then to about seven million dollars, um, at the end of this year, which is about seventeen percent fund balance. Remember, our goal is eight percent. For our, uh, reserved and committed accounts, you'll see our staff development is probably gonna be at zero with the end of this year. LTFM will have a little, uh, cushion there, which is important because of a presentation I'll make in a few minutes. Health and safety's gonna stay at zero. This is the last year. We have to close that out. Um, operating capital, we still will have a healthy operating capital, uh, balance, gifted and talented. We're spending some of that down this year as we have a, uh, a point eight gifted and talented coordinator now. Um, safe schools, gain a little bit, severance, um, should go down, um, planning on a, a, a couple retirements. Remember, our teacher severance is all paid for now, so these are just the non-teacher severance payments at this point. And the nutrition services and community services, we'll see a, a small increase in nutrition services of about thirty-six thousand dollars. And also an increase in community services. A lot of that, again, is gonna be school readiness because of the increase in state aid. Um, although we should be able to regain some of the loss that we had in our, um, just regular community ed, um, fund balance that, that we, um, lost some fund balance last year. We should be able to gain some of that back. So yeah, so that's basically the revised budget presentation. Depending on, you know, our, our salary increases and our settlements, I may bring another one to be approved, um, after that's all done. Um, I may not, depending on how, you know, how far off I was, um, on the, um, projected settlements. Any questions at all?
Can I get a motion to approve the, if there's no questions?
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero. Thank you, Sandy.
Truth and taxation. Um, I'll be as brief as I can, but I always wanna be thorough for the camera, for taxpayers that are watching, um, uh, online, um, the presentation. Okay, the truth and taxation law, basically, we're required to hold a public meeting on the proposed tax levy and we must include discussion on the taxes payable for the next calendar year, which is two thousand eighteen, discussion of the current year budget and provide an opportunity for public comment. Uh, for all funds, at the end of last year, for two thousand sixteen seventeen, our local property tax levies were about nine percent of our total revenue. State was eighty-six percent and other revenues were five percent. So the majority of the revenue we receive is through the state, um, through the state for various, uh, general revenue and also other various, um, categories. So how are local school taxes determined? Um, there's three main types of levies. One is voter-approved levies. These are bonds for building projects and the operating levy. You know, we had a bond approved back about a two and a half years ago and we also just had an operating levy approved, um, in November. Have some, um, for school by, determined by school board decision. There's special levy authority for facility leases, reemployment insurance, reemployment costs. And then we have board-approved and local optional revenue, which is actually deducted from our voter-approved operating levy. Hopefully soon I can stop saying that because that's kind of all going away and it will be kinda, kinda set. And then we have levies that are deter- determined by state formula. Equity, operating capital, transition, community services, safe schools, long-term facilities maintenance, career tech. And, uh, student achievement actually is done, um, as of last year. All the levies in red are equalized levies, which means that the total revenue is first calculated by the state and then part is paid by levy and part is paid by state aid based on a formula. The goal is to equalize the impact, um, to local property tax owners based on whether you live in a, a high or low-value, uh, property tax district. So some factors contributing to this year's levy changes, um, first of all, our adjusted net tax capacity and referendum market value both increased by about three and a half percent. Um, increases in market value have a tendency to decrease, decrease state aid and increase the local levy for all levies that are equalized because it's based on, um, the student per, uh, market value. So, our market value per student. So it's, in general, if your market value increases, your state aid decreases. Uh, we have an increase of pupil units of fifty-two and that incre- that increases levies. Um, that's a one point two percent increase in, um, um, student enrollment. We had our voter-approved one hundred dollar increase in the, uh, op- excess operating levy that the voters approved. This is the last year of our LTFM revenue phase-in. If you recall, that was a three-year phase-in. Three years goes very fast, cause it just feels like it was last year this happened, but it's been three years. So this was a, there was a jump in that, in that, um, category, uh, for our levy. Um, we had some prior year adjustments due to higher than projected student enrollment. And we had a fairly large prior year adjustment for Kids Company School Age Child Care. And, um, that was part of the reason that, uh, the Fund Four Community Ed, um, expenses were so high or the, uh, fund balance decreased was because our school age childcare costs have been way more than projected. So the levy allows us to catch up a little bit there. And then there's also the forty percent tax credit for ag land for all bond referendums. So any farmers, basically, for all the bond referendums that they pay on their local property tax, they will receive a tax credit of forty percent for that portion and then the district will receive that in state aid instead. This is just a quick chart showing the referendum market value history. You can see, um, you know, it was increasing for a while, then it went down with the economy, but it's going back up again. So that is gonna be a factor going forward as some of our state aid will decrease. And this is our ju- adjusted net tax capacity history. You see the same pattern there. Um, it went down, hit a low of, in two thousand fourteen and is now climbing back up. Here's our general fund levy, is, is increasing twenty-one percent. Um, basically, um, due to the voter-operating approved levy, the new levy and also the long-term facilities maintenance, um, levy, um, increase and a couple of minor adjustments. See, like the equity levy increased forty-four thousand dollars. That's because there's an in- increase in levy and a decrease in the state aid. The overall revenue isn't, isn't decreasing, but the, um, levy portion is increasing. Community Services Fund, you see a, a, a very large increase there, forty-two percent. The dollar amount's a lot, a lot smaller. And again, you have that disabled school age childcare, um, with a, a catch-up from the prior year, an increase of a hundred and seventeen thousand dollars there. Then the Debt Service Fund, we did have, uh, you know, you always have any irregular debt service schedule, so there's always increases and decreases from year to year. But we also, in there, that increase of four hundred eleven thousand dollars, part of our LTFM money is being levied in the debt service because we're gonna be issuing bonds for a large project. And we'll talk about that a little bit later as well. So basically, overall, our total levy is increasing, uh, one point four million or a twelve point five, twelve point one percent increase from the prior year. This just so, shows that in graph form, um, how, um, how the increases are, are, are looking. Of our total levy, thirty-nine percent are board-approved levies and sixty-one percent are voter-approved levies. That's because of our large debt service burden. You know, we've built two elementary schools, big addition of the high school, and now we've got the, you know, the most recent, um, bond. So that does, um, increase that voter-approved, uh, portion of the levy quite a bit. Levy by fund, again, debt service is sixty-four percent of our levy, general fund is thirty-three percent and community service is only, is only three percent of our levy. Estimated tax impact based on the what-if given to us by Scott County, um, a home valued at one ninety-two nine, which is the a- average in the city of New Prague. Um, with no change in the value from the prior year, we'll see a sixty-two dollar a year increase or a six, six point two percent increase. Obviously, if your property value increased, that would be, you'd get a higher increase. If it decreased, the percentage increase would be lower. And just to note here, that the truth and taxation notices mailed in November do not include the hundred dollar increase in operating levy voters approved, um, in November. So when they get their actual tax bills, they, that will be larger than what was on their truth and taxation notices, just so you know that. And here's just a couple of interesting things. There are almost fifty-five hundred residential homes in our district, um, that, which is sixty-two more homes than the, than the prior year. And, um, almost sixty percent of our homes increased in value over five percent, but eighteen percent of homes actually decreased in value. So there is a, there is a, a blend going on there, but yeah, sixty percent of our homes are increasing quite rapidly. The budget information was as presented earlier. The next steps, if the public is, um, wishes to give, um, feedback to the school board, uh, you will certify the final levy. The county auditor tack, calculates the final bills and then they start collecting that in April and May of two thousand eighteen. And so we are asking that the board certify the levy as presented at thirteen point four million dollars. And see if there's any questions or any?
Public?
Um, to comment? Any questions or comments?
Doesn't look like it.
The only one. Any questions?
No.
I'll make the motion, we, that the board certify the levy as presented at thirteen million four hundred thirty thousand dollars and six, or four hundred thirty thousand, six hundred forty-nine dollars.
I'll second the motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero. Long-term facilities maintenance.
Yeah, so there's been a slight, and if you recall, you approved the LTFM plan in August, no, July, July. It's a ten-year plan going out and of course, a lot can change from, uh, you know, uh, that's a ten-year plan. So we're proposing tonight, we make a change in our plan and we need to send this, the updated plan to the Minnesota Department of Education. I'll have Craig explain the actual project.
Yeah, as we all know, we were gonna, uh, re-roof the high school, the old portion of the high school that was built originally in nineteen ninety-eight. And last, the last couple of years, we've been experiencing a lot of failures in the, in the air conditioning units that we have at the high school. And currently, right now, we have eleven DX condensing units, which are basically air conditioning units that are spread throughout that high school on the roof. There's, are, they're, they're, all of them are R twenty-two refrigerant, which now has been banned by the EPA. So if we have to do any repairs on those, we really can't use that stuff. You can buy it, but it's really expensive. So that means all the line sets and cooling coils will require replacement as well. All the units have been inspected over this last summer. I had a, a company come in, they went through them all. And we actually expect them all to fail within the next five years. The current DX units are beyond their useful life and they're failing at a rapid, at a rapid pace. They're very expensive to replace. I have one right now that is need of, in need of replacement and the final, um, just for one unit itself, that final bill was around a hundred thousand dollars just for the unit itself. That didn't include line set replacements and piping replacements and the rest of it. And also DX units are not very energy efficient. So what we're looking to do is propose that we, we add HVAC dehumidification, which includes a chilled water system with four rooftop air-cooled units. Um, these are basically chillers is what they are and we use, we put new chillers in the middle school. This year, we have two of them down there and we put two chillers in this building at the CEC as well as part of the, the project. That includes replacement of all cooling coils and all associated piping that goes with it. Um, the reduction in cooling and dehumidific- we'll see a reduction in cooling and dehumidification cost for the high school as well. Uh, the timing is right, combining with the re-roof. If we wait and we decide to do this a few years down the road, we have to go back in and recurb the areas where these new units would go. So we can incorporate that into the, into the roofing project this, this next summer. So the timing is, is actually, uh, it's a good time to do it for that reason. Just for an example, chillers are very dependable. They're reliable, they're energy efficient. We have a chiller at Falcon Ridge right now that was put in in nineteen ninety-two and we're still running it. I'm not saying we haven't had some repairs on it, but we're still running it. So what we're asking for is to incorporate this into the LTFM plan for the next school year, eighteen nineteen. And we would do this project at the same time that we do the re-roof next summer. And as you know, the re-roof project came in at about two point one million dollars. Uh, this HVAC construction would add another million and a half. Our fees and contingencies would be six hundred and forty-four thousand dollars, so it's a total cost and a hit to our LTFM plan of four million four hundred and four thousand four ninety.
I also have to say, if we sell bonds, um, one time, that saves us a lot of money as well because of the, uh, bond issuance costs. So if we did the roof project now and then the HVAC a couple of years from now, then you have to pay the bond issuance costs twice. So it's very cost-effective in that way as well. So we'd sell a par, par amount of bonds of, of, uh, four point five million. That includes the issuance costs. And this, the bond payments will use about half of our LTFM revenue for the next ten years. It's a big, it's a big, um, chunk. The bond sale, we'd, we'd call for the bond sale on March tw- the March twenty-sixth meeting. We'd have the bond sale on April twenty-third and we'd have the funds available May twenty-fourth. So, um, that would be our, our plan and we have the, um, I think the spreadsheet was attached. I guess I don't remember if the spreadsheet was tat- it was, okay. Um, it just shows that, you know, it's usually about half of our, half of our LTFM funds for the next, um, ten years. But it will get a major, two major projects done.
You're not putting anything else off to do this, right?
No, and with the, with the bond referendum that we just finished up, we, we did so much LTFM project. If you remember the, the facilities, um, study that was done, we did all the priority ones and twos. We reassessed that in October. And, um, it's turned into priority ones and twos as well. So we're kinda at the point now where most of our LTFM is taken care of. We did a lot at Falcon, we did a ton here, we did a ton at the middle school. Our other two buildings are new, the Falcon, you know, Falcon Ridge, we, we did a lot of HVAC there. So right now, it looks, you know, we're gonna concentrate. So, right now, it looks, you know, we're going to concentrate on that high school. A lot of people don't realize that high school is twenty years old.
Right, right.
Everybody thinks it's new, but it's not. It's twenty years old. So, the units there, they've lived their life, and we're expecting them to fail. So, I think our recommendation is to just do it at the same time, get it done, and it'll serve us for many years, I'm sure.
How about the addition we put on at the high school? Is that one up to everything good there?
We would replace all those DX units as well. We're not going to re-roof that.
Okay, okay.
So, we're going to, that, that roof is about ten years old now. So, we, we have, and that's an Adirard roof, too. That's not a ballasted roof like we had on the old school, on the old part of the building. So, it'll last longer, should last longer.
Well, someone who's been in there in the summer times when the AC fails, I think it's a great idea, because then you have to call and get an electrician on the roof.
And what we found when we did, when I had them come in and do the inspections, these units are all different sizes. Some have six stages to them, some have four, some have two. We're running overall at about sixty percent right now, with, with, a lot of the compressors have failed. And so, that's where we're at.
I know this is kind of like water over the dam, but why weren't chillers used initially when the construction was done?
I, I asked that question to Wold and Paulson and Clark, who did the stud, did this work for us, and gave us this, they actually recommended this to us, that we should do this, too. I asked that question, and the, and the response I got was the two responses. Number one, it's cheaper. It's cheaper to put in.
Initially, it was.
Initially, absolutely. And then, second of all, that's what they did then. That's, that's basically what they used to do. They, in a building that size, they just thought putting chillers in and adding all the additional piping, the cost, it was, it's just really, it's expensive to do upfront, but.
But in the long run, it probably would have been.
Long run, it's definitely the way to go, yep.
Thank you.
Any other questions? I get a motion to approve the.
I'll make a motion to approve the ten-year LTFM plan revision.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes seven-zero.
Thank you.
School calendar. How about that calendar committee?
It's a moment you've been waiting for.
You didn't like your one and two options.
Drum roll, please.
Number three.
Well, the calendar. We looked at different options this year. Had a little bit more flexibility than past years, but because we have a construction project over four-hundred thousand, I've got a letter that's sent into the Department of Education. We're still waiting for final approval of it, but it allows us to start before Labor Day. And then, obviously, we'll end earlier, and we did three options and decided to send out to all staff and parents, and we had a great response. We had over four-hundred staff members respond to the survey, and we had over thirteen-hundred parents. And their responses were very similar. Both were choosing option B. Forty-eight or forty-nine percent of them chose that. And then, option A, that was also start before Labor Day without any break, and get done May twenty-third. That was the second one with twenty-six percent, I believe. And then, option C, starting after Labor Day, was twenty, about twenty-three percent. If I would do it again, and I, we talked about this to go to the third option kit, and you mentioned that, I'm glad we did. I had a few people question, why didn't we have a start after Labor Day without a spring break? And I guess we could have done that, and maybe in the future, we can. There's only so many ways to do a calendar, and people need to know that. And really, the big thing is the, the Labor Day start and the spring break are the two big things. So, we can do that in the future, I guess. But as you can see, the vast majority of people like the pre-Labor Day start. And then, the most popular one is B, and overwhelmingly was B. So, my recommendation is that we do calendar B, and I'll just review it one more time with you for the people who are watching online. You can see we're starting before Labor Day on August twenty-seventh. With the calendar there, you can see the Christmas break there, or I should say, the holiday, winter holiday break. On that one, also, we have February fifteen, oh, I want to mention, go back to November. This is something that we're, just listening to the, the staff members, the teachers especially, with conferences, a couple nights there, going through that, that it'd be nice to have a comp day on November ninth, so we have an off day there. February fifteenth and eighteenth are on President's Day. So, you got a four-day weekend there, and then, spring break the last week in March, and still being able to get out, May thirtieth, so we'd have graduation on May thirty-first. So, a little bit different. It's not on Memorial Day, which is probably a better thing anyway, if you can do it that way. The way Labor Day falls, and the way Christmas and New Year's falls, is, you don't get that, because they're early in the month, we're able to get out earlier. So, it's, it's, doesn't always happen that way, where you can, usually, we're going to, if we do this type of calendar, our spring break has to be around Easter, which we couldn't do anyway, because it was, you know, about a month before school gets out. So, it's a sort of a unique calendar, but again, that was, the input we received by, was by far the most popular one. And I think it's good for kids, and I still go by belief that kids are ready before Labor Day, ready to get going. And I think the teachers have said that, the vast majority. So, I'll take questions now.
Just a question with the thirtieth ending, that's a Thursday, and Monday, no school. What does that look like for seniors? Do they?
I asked Lani about that. He said it would work. They have no problem with that.
Not a problem, okay. I mean, are they, do they come to school the thirtieth? Even, I'm not even sure. They would have three days of school then, correct?
Yep, they have three days that week. The seniors, obviously, would be done the week before.
Okay.
Any other questions? I'll make a motion to approve the calendar.
I'll make a motion to approve the calendar.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes seven-zero.
This is calendar B, right?
Right.
I'll make a motion to approve calendar B.
Got to do that again.
Bill passes.
Calendar B, yep. All right, Ties?
Ties.
Ties update. And Ties, we're one of forty-eight school districts that belong to Ties, and start way back. It's basically for technology, cooperative, that we use. We, we used to, we haven't been very involved, and we just joined back in 2010. It was for a data warehouse system. And basically, right now, we have very limited use with them, but they're struggling right now financially, and there's, just like, we're one of ten school districts that are, have sent their letter in to withdraw. So, anyway, where we're at with things right now, December twentieth, that means a week from this Wednesday, there's a meeting of superintendents, and Ties is going to be presented at that meeting, the different scenarios and the financial impact it would have, have on all forty-eight school districts. If, you know, if they would close down, or if they'd continue and stuff like that. So, we'll know our options on December twentieth, and then, I'll share that with you. First, via email, and then, obviously, we'll talk at the first board meeting in January. The decision that will be voted on by all the districts will be on January twenty-fourth. So, Sandy and I will be at that meeting. And then, obviously, we'll, you know, need your input and decision on what, what direction we'll go. But we really don't know anything until we get that information on the finances on December twentieth.
And then, will we need to approve something before you go to the meeting in January? Or is that just like an advisory type? Okay.
Yep, I'll just, you know, go with the consensus we have here from the board after we share all that information.
I have a refresher. What was that, thirty thousand to Ties? What was that?
Oh, that was, well, again, financially, they're not doing well. So, they charged every school district, all forty-eight school districts, a seven-dollar fee per student. So, we have a little over four thousand students, so it comes to approximately thirty thousand dollars. So, a lot of districts are not very happy about that, so that's just one piece of it. So, to get through this next year, that's what they charged.
Will we resolve not to pay?
Pardon me?
Can we resolve not to pay?
Uh, that's been talked about. We thought, Sandy and I have talked a little bit about that, but I mean, we belong, I think.
It's only two more months.
Being a team player, I mean, ethically, it'd be difficult to do that. We haven't officially withdrawn to do something like that. I don't know if that would be the right thing to do. But I know there's a couple of districts that I think they're going to pay, but have said, well, what if we don't pay? But I just don't think that's the right thing to do, since we are a member. That's a good point, Don.
It could also result in litigation, and those are expenses, and it's probably not a good idea.
We'll probably end up paying attorneys thirty thousand, so I don't know.
Okay. Next, we have a resolution for polling places for 2018.
At this time, I'll entertain a motion to consider the resolution establishing combined polling places for multiple precincts and designating hours during which the polling places will remain open for voting for school district elections not held on the day of statewide election. Do I have that motion?
I'll move.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to consider the following resolution. Be it resolved by the School Board of Independent School District 721, State of Minnesota, pursuant to Minnesota statutes, the precincts and polling places for school district elections, are those precincts or parts of precincts located within the boundaries of the school district which have been established by the cities or towns located in whole or in part within the school district? The board hereby confirms those precincts and polling places so established by those municipalities. And they would include St. Patrick's Social Hall, address Jordan, Minnesota, Elko New Market Area Hall, Elko New Market, Minnesota, Longsville City Hall, Longsville, Minnesota, Wheatland Town Hall, Vesely, Minnesota, and St. Wentz's Laos Parish Activity Center. These combined polling places serve all territory in Independent School District 721, located in the city of New Prague, number two Bell Plain in Scott County. That's for the last one. Pursuant to the Minnesota statutes, the polling places will remain open for voting for school district elections not held on the same day as the statewide election between the hours of seven o'clock AM and eight o'clock PM. The clerk is hereby directed to file a certified copy of this resolution with the county auditor of each of the counties in which the school district is located in whole or in part within thirty days after this adoption.
How do you vote on this, Don?
I have a question. I don't hear so well. Did you say the New Prague one will be at St. Wentz?
I was going to ask that same question.
Yes, St. Wentz Parish Activity Center.
So, they're not going to be at the gym here?
Have to use the polling place that has been set by the city or township and are going to keep their elections at the parish center.
Okay.
So, we had to go with what they had. Same thing with Elko New Market.
What's that?
They don't use Eagleview.
Okay.
Added in all the legal documentation that we read that we had to go with a polling place that is currently used by the city or township.
And they're going to keep it there for 2018?
Thank you, Jen.
I vote yes.
Jerry?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Kitten?
Yes.
Jean?
Yes.
Jerry?
Yes.
Dennis, yes. Item passes seven, no.
We have grants from New Prague Area Education Foundation to approve. There's four of them. Robotics in the middle school, Little Robots, I guess, at Raven Stream. STEM, which in engineering and math, at Eagleview, and books at the middle school.
I'll make a motion to approve the New Prague Area Education Foundation grant requests.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes seven-zero. Now, we need to enter into closed session for an update on negotiations, contract negotiations.
Need a motion, and then, I'll make a motion, go into closed session.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.